Hey Gloucester Township, I'm Joe Allen and this is not Keith Gibbons next to me here. I've got Sam Sweet in here. Sam reached out to me back in December and wanted to talk about some school board stuff going on. And I said, well, listen, stop on down and we'll have before we record our next podcast with respect to Keith, who is our normal co-host. He's on school board, so we did not want to include him in this. But this was kind of a thing that was going on that we wanted to talk about. And I had some questions. You brought it up and I thought, wow, this really doesn't make sense to me. So I guess to summarize what happened here.
Well, I think we need to give a little background.
Yeah.
Has anybody ever wondered why when the school board candidates are running, there's not a meet and greet?
Right. Everybody's mentioned it.
You know, there's no meet and greets. You get your signs out, people putting signs out, maybe knocking on doors, but especially this past election, we ended up getting six or seven flyers combined with the Black Horse Pike Regional and three names to choose from. And then, you know, we don't know these candidates. And I've been pushing for a meet and greet for years.
Right.
And we almost got a meet and greet one year. It fell through at the last minute. They ended up putting the kibosh on it. And then the following year, they wrote a law that stated that basically, it was policy 7510. And 7510 says that that no school, on any school property shall there be any political, whether it be federal, state, so the actual orders, there shall be no instance where school facilities shall be used for any type of federal, state, or local political purpose. School facilities may be used as election sites, polling locations, i.e. primary, general, or special. This prohibition includes any type of local election, i.e. township, school board, fire station, etc. That is the rule that was passed back in December of 2020. Now, school board.
Oh, this is not something, this is not something that goes way back. This is a new, this is a new thing that was passed.
This was three years ago.
Okay.
The problem that I have with this is school board is not supposed to be political to begin with. It's nonpartisan. The school board elected officials take an oath that they're not affiliated with any political party. So for them to group a school board meet and greet as a political issue, I have a problem with. But that was passed back in 20.
Right.
So Terry Fretz, a longtime resident of Gloucester Township, has been championing this cause as well to, hey, let's get meet and greets. And just, this isn't something new to Gloucester Township. Every other school district in South Jersey has a meet and greet, whether it be one or two. Cherry Hill has two of them, one at Cherry Hill East, the other one at Cherry Hill West. Washington Township has, I believe, three of them at different times. Other townships, Marlton has them at the elementary schools and they're hosted by the PTO. So this isn't something new, but we're not doing it in Gloucester Township. And it begs the question, why?
Right. What's the downside? There's no downside to this.
There's no downside to holding a meet and greet because it gets to know, like I've come to see that when people go out to elections and it's a governor election, they know who they're voting for. And they'll go, they're going in and they're voting for, or a mayor election, they're running out and they know who they're voting for. But at school board, there's three names. Oh my God, there's six names. Who am I choosing? I don't know any of these names. And we found out that by standing at the polls and talking, or doing a podcast, or a Facebook page, or anything, we, not influence the public, but we can inform the public of who's running and whether these, you know, what their values are. You know, I am a firm believer, I can't state this enough, that politics has no place in the school board. And just to further back that issue up, the school board, how much do you see the school board budget is?
Well, I know. I know now. It's like 140 million dollars.
140 plus million dollars. And right now, at this very moment, that's in charge, the Democrats of this town control that budget for the schools. Now, let me be clear on this. This is to say that they're willy nilly spending money and they're not spending it on the schools because they are. They're spending the money on the schools, but a certain portion, if there's something left over, they might go to one of their pay to play vendors. And that's a whole nother story. But the bottom line is, we should have meet and greets so the public can reach out and talk to these people and find out who, why are you running? Why do you want to run for school board? What do you value? Whether it be, you know, how do you feel about wit and wisdom? How do you feel about the curriculum?
Right.
You know, what are your values towards children? How do you, and right now, we don't have that. All we get is in Gloucester Township, flyers that have a cute little saying, you know, standing up for your children. Well, isn't that the whole purpose of school board? So that could go over everybody.
In the same way that we talk, we know, we talk regularly about council on the podcast here. In the same way that council is a representative of the taxpayers, your school board is a representative of not only the taxpayers, but most importantly, the parents. So what's the downside of the parents meeting the people that are going to represent the parents? And that's, that's the thing here.
Well, the downside is, it's obvious.
If you don't have answers.
You don't have any answers, number one, and you're being told to run, which a lot of school board members are told to run.
Right.
They want, they want to get involved, but they don't know how it, what's the process. So then the Democrats that are in power say, hey, we'll handle it all for you. I stood outside this past election, outside of Shoes Landing with Jared Thomas. And Jared Thomas was running and he was like saying, oh, I'm running for school board. And, you know, here's my flyer. And they had a nice glossy flyer. And I was standing out supporting some candidates. And our flyer was like, you know, made out of this paper, thin paper. And I would make the joke saying, hey, we're not politically backed. And Jared Thomas would say, oh, no, we're not politically backed either. I'm like, well, where'd your money come from? And so if you're being politically backed, this, you know, and you're being, they're spending $40,000. Now, mind you also, this is an unpaid position. Like this, no money being, this, you're doing this because you have the, you know, you're looking out for the children to begin with.
Yeah.
So there is no downside for the regular person to have a meet and greet.
Right.
There's no downside for the parents to understand who's in charge of the money that our taxes are paying because I think in Gloucester Township, and don't quote me on the exact percentage, but I think it's 45% is of our tax bill goes to the schools. Is it 40, 47? Might be 47.
It's 40, yeah, it's under 50, I think it's 45 actually. I think, I think it is.
So, but that's still a big chunk of our taxes that are going to schools. And now we're putting it in the hands of people that are being controlled by politicians. So.
Yeah. Well, not, not, not the parent representatives is basically what it comes down to. So we're getting, we're getting people in, we're getting people in that are, that are funded into these positions because the people funding them know how they're going to vote. That's essentially what it is.
And again, to be clear, it's not like they're not getting books for the kids. It's not like they're not doing a bus driving. They're providing it. It's just, oh, there's a little extra here. Let's divert it over to this company as opposed to company B who doesn't donate to our cause. So anyway, getting back to the meet and greet. So Terry Fretz has been all year trying to get it on the agenda. And she wrote, you know, she wanted to follow up on her request to the policy committee meeting at the school board as to the meaning of removing the five words of prohibits parent groups in our schools from holding functions such as meet and greet. She wanted to remove the school board. And what ended, so what ended up happening was, I believe it was at the December meeting, the first one after the election, December meeting, it came to a head and it was struck down. And two of the people.
So it wasn't, it wasn't put on the agenda, is what you're saying?
No, it was put on the agenda. It was put on the agenda and it was voted. And it was struck down by the, by the board members. And the board members that voted for it were Jennifer O'Donnell.
Oh, okay.
Keith Gibbons, Mary Ann Johnson. The other six did not vote for it. Two of those were Ellen Reese and Linda Gilch. The other, the other four were politically controlled or politically controlled school board members. Mary Jo Gentino, Anthony Marks, I believe, Kia Gore, and I can't remember the other one's name.
Okay.
All right. But Ellen Reese and Linda Gilch voted no. Now, they used to be, unbeknownst to them, politically controlled because they ran for school board way back when the law, you know.
Yeah.
And at the time, they ended up winning school board, but it was a seven to two votes. So their votes didn't matter. And then over time, people, I guess, got educated. One person came on, then Mary Ann Johnson came on. So then it became an issue of, well, can we control how, we don't want to lose control of the school board budget. So when that vote came down, I reached out to both of them and asked, why did you vote no on this?
Yeah.
And because I was a little shocked by it. Like they, we've had conversations. I stood up for them, told them that people should vote for them because they're not politically backed. And why, you know, like, how could you vote no on this? This is a good thing for Gloucester Township to have meet and greets in the schools. And Ellen reached out to me and said, we don't have to justify our vote, but since, since I know you and you asked, I will tell you that the policy that allows a motion to be added by a board member was not followed correctly. Hence, I will not support something done through the wrong procedure. And that was from Ellen Reese. And then Linda Gilch writes, I'm not going to repeat what Ellen said, but I don't, I personally do not like how this was handled. And I voted my conscience and on my own, with no one telling me how I should vote. It was solely my vote. And then I asked, well, I don't understand how it was put on the agenda, wrong. Like how did, my question is, if it was put on the agenda, then what's the procedure? And then the other thing was, but isn't this a good thing with the?
Besides, like outside of all that though, if you just asked me my opinion on something, flat out, hey, do you think that we should have meet and greets? I have an opinion. I'm going to give you that opinion. I'm not going to say, don't ask me this right now. This isn't the right time to ask me. I'm going to give you my opinion. And I'm going to, I'm going to give you my opinion because I think it's the best for the community. Why couldn't they just give their opinion and their vote for the benefit of the community? I don't, I don't understand. What does it have to do with how it was brought on? Yeah, I think what you're gonna, I think what you were saying is that.
So, so hold on. So Linda then decides to double down and say that, she mentions Terry Fretz in the email. She says, I mean, no, just, you know, I'm not disregarding Terry Fretz. What, I didn't mention Terry Fretz at all in the, in my email or my text. And then she says, my question is, no one came to that meet and greet, right? The public never educates themselves on many things, as you know. And I am under the impression that, that it was the parent who started this conversation and wanted to have it. Where was everyone else if they were so concerned about who was running? Now, I know that there was a meet and greet where everybody was invited.
Yeah.
The politically backed candidates decided not to show up.
It was Glendora, right?
It was in Glendora. And not many people showed up to that. I think maybe six to 10 people showed up.
Right.
But we were trying to get the word out via Facebook, via, you know, what we had. And that's difficult to do because if you're not checking Facebook that day, or you don't know what's going on. Whereas if the schools had it, every school has every phone number or email of every parent, and they could blast it out and say, here we go, on this date, from six to nine, we're having a meet and greet with all the candidates.
Right.
And come get, come get to know who's running for school board. But because of policy 7510, they can't do that. So.
Even, even so, what's the downside to the school putting on a meet and greet? And to take, to take their point, okay, maybe the, maybe the parents in the township don't care, right? So they don't show up. What's the downside? So they have to show up one day and answer questions from six people that show up. So what? At least you answered six people's questions. Right?
I agree.
But yeah.
So to get back to what Ellen said, how it wasn't brought up properly. So Mary Ann Johnson, and I'm going to go a little geeky on here. I opened these emails back and forth because this is how passionate I am about having a meet and greet. Mary Ann Johnson said, is my understanding that committee gives a recommendation to the board and the board votes on it. I would like to see this discussed by the whole board ASAP. Mrs. Fretz has been asking for this for months. And if I remember correctly, she asked if I, if it could be discussed. And Dan Long, who's the counsel for the school board, told her as long as a board member agreed. And I did that at the time and it was seconded. And that was on November 20. On November 21, Mrs. O'Donnell said, I know I did it last night, but I'd like to make a formal request to have this added to the next agenda. May I reach out to Mr. Long to make sure it's done correctly? And that was addressed to Mary Ann Johnson, who's the president. Mary Ann Johnson wrote, yes, please. So then on Wednesday, November 22, Mrs. O'Donnell reaches out after getting instructions from Dan Long and says, Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Billado, I'm requesting that we remove the word school board from the following paragraph in policy 7510, and this matter be added to the next agenda. Mary Ann Johnson responded to that email and says, please add this to December agenda. Thank you in advance. Now, Ellen Reese stated to me in a text that it wasn't brought to the board properly. Well, the emails from Jennifer O'Donnell and Mary Ann Johnson copied Dan Long, John Billado, Kia Gore. Dan Long is the, is the attorney.
Yep.
John Billado is the superintendent. Kia Gore is on the policies committee. She's the chairperson of the policy committee back then.
Okay.
Ellen Reese is on the policy committee with that. So this came to the policy committee via the proper channels. So what I don't understand is, as far as I'm concerned, what she texted me was a lie that it didn't come through the proper channels, which tells me that she's being forced.
Scared? I don't, yeah.
You know, whatever, or coerced or something to vote no. Now, mind you, she did lose the election. So maybe, and she does have a job with the township. So maybe she was coerced and she lost and votes no. Linda Gilch though votes no too and says, because no one shows up anyway. But again, to your point, if five people show up, that's five more people that are educated. And those people tell, tell their neighbors. And that's maybe 15 more people. And then those people tell some. But if you have enough of these and you could do one of the, we have 11 schools in this district. We can have five meet and greets. We can have three meet and greets.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's just transparency. And that is what, man, we've been, we've been seeing this transparency tune now for so many years. And that's, it's simplest as it is, hey, I just show up in an auditorium. And if nobody else shows up to listen to what I gotta say, I go home. If a lot of people show up and they ask me questions, I tell them who I am. And it's transparency. That's it. It's so simple.
The problem is the political machine doesn't want the transparency because people will ask that question, why are you signed up for them? Why, you know, when I was standing outside of the, you know, Shoes Landing with Jared Thomas, Jared had no answers for anybody when he, when they look at him and go, well, who funded your flyer? And he's like, I don't know. And then the other person who was with him goes, well, he knows, of course he knows. I'm like, which one is it? Is he lying there saying, but he doesn't know? Or does he really not know who's funding his, his cause? And does he really truly think that someone's going to spend $40,000 for an unpaid position and not want something in return? And this policy should have been passed. It's a no brainer for that. Politics has no reason on the school board? No need to be political on the school board. It's for the kids. Bottom line. And anybody who wants to, you know, dispute that, I don't want to say you're wrong.
Yeah. It's, it's, I mean, it's, it's like, it's the purest possible thing, in my opinion, that you could run for. Go meet some parents, take their concerns, tell them how you feel about their concerns. And then if they think that you're the person that represents them, they elect you. It's, it's as simple as that. Why would anybody vote against having that? I am so, I, you know, I, look, I've got, I've got both of those people's signs probably still in my garage from when I had them in my front yard. Because I believed in them.
I believed in them. I stood, stood behind them. I interviewed them when they, when the mayor's people kicked them to the curb and then got the whole story. You know, I believed in them. And then the last minute, they, our policy, it's not like we're voting on a policy that's inherently bad or is divided, you know, 50 50. This is a policy for the benefit of the school board to get to know the people that are running, that are going to be in charge of your children's education. Bottom line. And for Ellen and Linda to turn at the last minute and say no, and then give, give me basically BS reasons, the only thing I can think of is that they were coerced into doing that. Now, Ellen didn't win, so she, but she may run again. And Linda is, her term is up this year. And she's going to, I don't know if she's going to run in November or not, but I can guarantee you that I'm not supporting her.
Well, yeah.
Especially after this, because I just don't, I can't believe that a policy where we can meet school board candidates in the schools, in a controlled setting, in an environment where we can get parents to come out, would be voted down.
No, I mean, there's, there's, I don't see, I don't see anything wrong with it. And like I said, no matter how, and then, and you already proved, this was done the proper way. Even if it wasn't done the proper way, there's still the right answer. And the right answer is always going to be transparency. So man, it's a shame. It's, it's a shame. But you know, you know what the bigger shame to me is? Is that we're so limited to the amount of people that we have that show up for these type of elections that sign up for this. You know, so we have limited amounts of people that will run for these positions. And I guess that's why we're, you know, we've, we've got it, we're out there, we're out there pushing people that were like, I mean, they're, look, they're okay. Where we could be pushing people that are, that are great. And we don't have people that are great. So I guess, I mean, I guess that's a call to, you know, I don't know.
Well, I can tell you again, what's that?
The school board.
School board election is every year.
Every year.
Three, it's a, it's a rotating, there's nine school board members. This is Gloucester Township. But every year, there's three people that are up. And it changes over every year. And, you know, you can tell, the big joke is you can tell who not to vote for it or who's politically backed. I shouldn't say not to vote for it, politically backed. And if you, and if you want to vote for a politically backed candidate, then you know who to vote for. If you're, if you want an independent candidate who's not politically backed, who's got the better, you know, the best interests of your children in mind, then you know who to vote for as well. You know, standing outside of the polls, I do it every year, regardless of whether I'm running or not. I've done it to help the school board candidates that are independent. But people come up to me and goes, how do we get involved? How do we, you know, and the biggest concern that they have is, how do I get the word out that I'm running for school board? Like this is a big township. How do I get that word? And it is a, it's a daunting task because this township is huge. I mean, you and I walk this township.
Yeah.
And there were days that, you know, we walked it. And then we're like, oh my God, we forgot this place. Oh my God, we forgot this place. It's a huge township. You could, we could start walking now until November and it's not covered.
We walked like every weekend. We probably got to 10% of this township.
Probably. And it's just, it's, so it's a daunting task. So why not use the schools to get the best candidates for the school board?
And honestly, you don't want somebody, look, what, what does it take? It takes probably 30, $40,000 for one single candidate to send their information out enough times that people know who they are. You don't want somebody to represent you in Gloucester Township that has $40,000 that can send flyers out.
Well, again, I might disagree with you on that. If they have $40,000 and it's their own money and they're, and they're not politically backed, I think I might be okay with that. But.
Is there people in this township that have $40,000 that are going to just?
I'm just saying, but if they're not politically backed. The problem is that these, you know, about, I want to say in 2019, there were, I think, 12 candidates that were running. And three of them were not politically backed and the other, and then they picked their, their positive three. And then they had another six people. And I talked to all six of those people. And they, you know, I'm not going to give any names, but all six of them all had the same story. They were approached to run and they were told that.
Oh, they were the Phantoms.
They were the Phantom candidates. But they were told to run, or they were asked to run. And they were told, well, we don't know what to do. We'll handle it. Don't worry about it. Just here, sign here. Two of the people that I talked to didn't even realize who they were running with. But they're on a, they're on a petition.
To dilute.
And they were there to dilute it. Now luckily, we're not diluting it anymore because Phantom candidates has been a forefront now.
Yeah.
And people are on the lookout for them. But they're still coming out with their three candidates, with their catchy slogans, their flyers. And if you, if all you're getting is a flyer in the mail and you're getting standing up for children, hey, that's a great flyer. This is great. But what does it mean? Doesn't everybody stand up for children? You know, there was one flyer, I think a couple of years back that said, we have your back. What, what does, it sounds catchy. We, we got your back. But doesn't every school board member have that? Does, they take an oath for that? And it's just like, I just, I'm very disappointed in Ellen and Linda for this. Very upset over that. And then to lie to me and come up with BS reasons makes me even more upset over it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the loot, and again, I will say it again, the losers are the children because, especially in this election now, the, the school board in 2023 was controlled by parents. All right. And that doesn't mean that the parents voted all the time against the mayor and the democratic machine. Sometimes they, they agreed on stuff. Because, but it's other times, they, there were questions that were asked.
Yeah.
It was like, hey, what's this bill for? Or can we get clarification on this? Now, the voting process has swung the other way. And it's a five to four vote. And we've, the parents of Gloucester Township have lost control of the school board and that 140 plus million dollar budget. I'll say it again, 140 million dollars.
I mean, I think it's, it's important to point out too, that because, because we have what we consider good people on the school board, you know, with, with, with Keith and Mary Ann and Jen, they don't fight the system. Right? They go in there and they vote for what, what is best. They don't, they don't have, they don't vote no on everything just because they're there to fight the system. They're voting for the, for the best interest. So, you know, in some situations, everybody shows up, everybody agrees on something because it's obviously the right thing for the kids. So it's not about just going, it's not about putting people in there to fight the system. It's just, it's going in there and just putting people in there that are good for representation.
Putting the right people in there for the right reasons.
Yeah.
Because again, I've, I've said, I ran for school board back in 15. I'm no longer running for school board because at the time that I ran, I, my wife's a school teacher. So I would have to abstain myself on a lot of the votes. So I'm not the best candidate for that because I have to abstain on votes.
Right.
Because of my, because of my wife's position. And I realized that. So you could have, but that doesn't mean that I don't go to the school board meetings. I look at it and I go, you know what? That's a good policy to have. That, and I agree with them. This is a, to outlaw meet and greets, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah. So that's, well, that, that's, that, that kind of breaks it down, huh?
That breaks it down. And the only thing I can say to everyone who's, who's listening out there, you have a school board election on, coming up in November, first week of November, and you have it every year?
When is, when, when is, when's the deadline for somebody, if they want to run for school board to get in? When is, when, when is, when's the deadline for somebody, if they want to run for school board, to get in? Is it like July?
Um, I believe it's, um, and don't quote me on this. I think it's by the primary of that year, so the first week of June. Um, okay, I think that's when the participants seem to be in, and, and also to run for school board. You just need, I think it's fifteen to ten, it's ten signatures.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just ten signatures of people that wanna vote for you, or that support you for school board. And then, you know, if anybody's out there listening and wants to run for school board, you know, re- reach out to Restore GT.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
Joe at RestoreGT.com, go to Restore GT on Facebook, Restore GT on Twitter, or X. Uh, if, if, if you have any questions on how to get the process done. Look, everybody involved with Restore GT has run for something at some point. We've all gone through the process. We can help you through the process. If you don't know ten people and you're a good person and you need signatures. Help you get some signatures.
Yeah, and, and if you, you're in it for the right reasons, you're not being politically backed. And there are a lot of people out there that are in there for the right reasons, and. The, the bottom line is, it's, it comes down to your children. What's best for the children, and, and I can't, I can't stress that enough. And so, you know, but it's every election, so I, I'm gonna tell you that get to know who's coming, you know, who's up for election. Where they're getting their money from, where they're backed, what their values are, and, you know, vote accordingly. Uh, if you have any questions, you can also reach out to, you know, Joe over at Restore GT, you can reach out to my Facebook page.
Yeah, Sam Sweet.
You know, um, and, you know, ask me questions on that, I'll be more than happy to answer because I actually do the research as well. And get to know who I'm voting for, for the school board, and I, and I realize that it's, you know, without a meet and greet. Which is why seventy-five-ten should have gotten rid of the school board. Because again, it's not, school boards should not be political. I can't stress that enough either.
Yeah, and I think, uh, you know, this election, this election, I think we should, we should probably make it a point here at Restore GT to. Interview the next batch of candidates, now that, uh, now that I am retired from running, I can sit back and retire, a- and I can. I can interview candidates for, for the next thing, so, uh. So if there are no meet and greets, at least we will get some good candidates on here, and we can interview them, and you all can figure out who they are. And, uh, anything else you wanna add before we go?
No, that's, that, that's really it. I just thank you for the time, appreciate, uh, being able to come out here.
So if you folks wanna run for a school board, reach out, and, uh, we'll set you on the right track. And, uh, if you haven't subscribed already, please subscribe to our podcast, please share it out with your friends, and, uh, we'll talk to you guys soon.